All right, welcome to Cleveland Heights City Council Committee of the Whole. It is Tuesday, September 2nd. I never forget to say Tuesdays. Uh, five thirty, Annie, would you call the roll, please?
Cobb.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Tetris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell. Hosh.
Here.
All right, Devita Russell was kind enough to let us start at five thirty today. She, she, you know, works till five thirty, she'll be here shortly. Um, and uh, we're gonna move a couple of things around in the agenda, but not Heights Arts. Heights Arts, we're gonna do first. So Rachel and company, please join us and...
Hello.
Hello.
We're anxious to hear what you guys are up to and...
And we're excited to, to talk about it.
Good.
Uh, so, we thought this would be a great time to just update council on what we've been accomplishing so far with ARPA, because our project's a little bit different than others. And um, and then end with the good stuff, where um, you get to see some of the, some of the launch that we're taking with Land Studio. So, it's been quite a journey. Just to uh, to go through the timeline, we did, we presented in June of twenty-three. And um, our desire was to continue the city's home-to-the-arts brand, make arts accessible to all residents through public art, strengthen community pride, and create placemaking and community engagement opportunities. And it was, it was a very exciting opportunity, I have to say. I stayed up for twelve hours the night before, just putting it together, because I only found out about it the day before. And the thought of, of aligning that with our twenty, twenty-fifth anniversary was just too good to pass up. Um, at that time, our timeline assumed that we would have a, at least a year to accomplish our engagement goals, which are critical in the public art process. Um, so it, through that, making meaningful connections with the residents and building owners of at that time, the North Coventry, Taylor, and Noble neighborhoods. This included meeting with the neighborhood organizations, residents and building owners, and determining...
Could you say it again, North Coventry?
Uh, I think, these were, I think, determined by city council at the time. North Coventry, Taylor, and Noble Neighborhoods. We had reached out to try and define them further, um, but we weren't able to get that information. Uh, I think our original proposal mentioned that we would work with the city to determine the, the exact locations, yeah. Um, and uh, these meetings and neighborhood, uh, this would include meeting with the neighborhood organizations, the residents, and the building owners, because those of you who know, it's not always easy to get ahold of the owners of buildings in, in the city. And then determining locations for art and the type of art that might go in. Uh, even without a contract at that time, we were, once we found out, we were excited to hit the ground running. So, we thought we might be able to start within six months, and we assembled a public art project team to begin discussions and identify the sites and be ready when the contract was executed. Some of these members include Cara O'Donnell, who was formerly, as you all here know, in city planning for twenty-five years. Um, and she's currently managing public art projects in the city of Shaker. Deidre McPherson, who I'm sure you all know, who is a Cleveland Heights resident and also the chief community officer for Assembly for the Arts. And um, Vince Reddy, who is formerly of Land Studio. So, uh, those were key members, along with architects, um, other arts, uh, and community members in the team. Um, we also identified members in the community as we hope to serve. Noble neighbors, those kinds of things. And we began identifying locations, but we felt we could not reach out without a contract, because we didn't want to not fulfill our promise. Um, at that time, I personally attended at least five meetings of over an accumulated twelve hours of city council between July and October of twenty-three. And after that, we met with Guide House at least five times, trying to prepare for the grant administration between April and July of twenty-four. When we did receive the final, the contract in September, we then realized, after a year and a half since our presentation, that we had to modify our scope, because we could not do the meaningful engagement that we wanted to do with the neighborhoods. Um, so, um, at that time, we, we began full force, and Cara is gonna take it away from there.
Yeah, and I'll just give you sort of the, the most recent parts of the, the sort of timeline, just to kind of keep you updated. So it was December of twenty-three that you all, um, passed the ARPA funding, um, and awarded us the, the funding. So in January twenty, twenty twenty-four was when we had that first project, public art project team meeting. Um, and so in the last year and a half, we've held fourteen of those. Almost every month, we've had a meeting with the group that Rachel had, just kind of getting ready for that. So, but it wasn't, um, in, by, in May of twenty twenty-four, um, we still had no contract. Um, and so several nonprofits at that time expressed their concern to city leadership about the lack of a contract and, and the timeline to spend those funds that they were coming up against. Um, in July of twenty-four, um, the mayor stated that the contract had ended with Guide House. Um, and so it was in December of twenty twenty-four that Heights Arts was finally able to execute the contract, that the city, the contract finally came, finally came, we executed it. And that was a year and a half after we had applied and a year after the funding was awarded by council. So, um, that anticipated year of engagement of those neighborhoods had been used up with the contracting process, basically. And so, and also at that time, um, you may remember that we were asked to work with the Coventry Village CID, who had also requested some funding for public art at that time. So, in early of twenty twenty-five, we pivoted to work with Coventry and Cedar Lee, because they had established, established CIDS, they had established networks that we could use, because we had, our, our engagement timeline had been contracted by so much. Um, and um, we, we worked with them. Um, we added CID reps of Coventry and Cedar Lee to that, um, to the public art project team. So, since that time of early twenty twenty-five, we have had those people coming to the meetings with us to, to, you know, weigh in, engage in, and, and, and be a great, a full part of that process. Um, and then we engaged Land Studio to manage the engagement going forward with the CIDS and with the public, um, create public art plans, um, guide the type of art, art we would select, whether that be murals or sculpture, or, um, you know, a placemaking, you know, decorative benches, whatever. Um, and as well as, um, you know, help us contact with the artists and, and to, um, you know, manage the art production process. So, um, Kyra Wells and Erin Guido are here from Land Studio, and um, I have, I think they have some fun slides to share with you. And I will also note, we have been checking in with the planning department and the economic development staff regularly, just to make sure that when we're working with land, what we're doing is, it, it fits into what their vision is. Like, we don't, you know, we want to make sure if they had a vision for a certain district, that we weren't, you know, going in a different direction from what they wanted. So they've been, um, great. It just like, sort of checking in and giving us some guidance and opportunity.
I just want you to know, I miss this.
I do miss you. Thank you all so much for having us, we really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thanks for having us.
This drives everything up there.
Oh, great, okay.
You should be able to just do it with the, the key.
With the down key.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for having us. I'm Erin Guido, I'm the Director of Arts and Special Projects.
And I'm Kyra Wells, I'm a project manager at Land Studio. Um, is there any way we can squeeze the, squeeze it back in, is it...
Oh, uh, press escape, maybe.
Escape?
Oh, there you go. There you go, thank you.
There you go.
Um, just to give you all some background on Land Studio, we are a public art and placemaking organization. And so sometimes what that looks like is murals and sculptures, and other times it looks like interactive installations, like at our public library or green spaces and parks. And so, um, most importantly, the community is at the center of what we do as a nonprofit organization. And we are both people that have like ties and connections to Cleveland Heights in different ways. I have a lot of family that lives here, I know you have a lot of family. So this is like a special project for us, understanding that it will influence like our communities as well. Um, and we are avid Cleveland Heights 패スサバイアス as well, and, and, and patrons. So, um, yeah, so as, as Kyra mentioned, we were asked to come up with public art plans for both Cedar Lee and the Coventry neighborhood, understanding that these two neighborhoods, while they are both in Cleveland Heights, they also have their own unique feels and own unique, um, expectations that the community may want out of those places. So it was really important for us, as we were going through this process, to understand what the needs were for both Cedar Lee and Coventry. So, our first, um, goal was that we needed to identify opportunities for both of those districts to develop this public art plan. So we went with our, um, public art team, through both of the districts, we walked the whole thing, we took a ton of pictures. In the rain. We had a beautiful day for Coventry. For some reason, Cedar Lee, it was an absolutely washed-out day. Uh, but it was still great. We walked the whole strip and really, um, took pictures, took opportunities to think about, really imagine what this could be. Um, and, and as you can see on those maps, feeling really small, we were like, we went all for it, right? On this larger plan, to say, what could it look like to have sculptures and murals and, and garage art and all sorts of things? But understanding that there is limited funding and there's limited timeframes, that may not be possible for this initial, um, execution of the plan, right? With these ARPA funds. So, we worked together with the public art team to determine what those priority projects are for twenty twenty-six. So, with that, we, with the Cedar, for Cedar Lee, we determined that a series of murals across the district will have the most impact in establishing it as this, um, public, this arts destination, as Cleveland Heights' home of the arts. And Coventry, while their budget was a little smaller, we determined with that team that bringing light to that district and, and creating some, um, form of a gateway would be enough to introduce the idea of public art in that area. So, our next steps, as we said, we already have identified the districts and opportunities, um, and priorities. So now our next step, where we're in the midst of right now, is working with the city and business owners in securing locations for public art. So we met with, um, Eric, there's Eric over there. We met with Eric a couple of weeks ago, just to kind of share the idea of the plan. And we're in that process right now to say like, okay, you know, what business owners might be the ones that would really be willing to have public art in, on their, um, buildings? And, you know, um, what sort of hoops might we have to navigate through? Um, we are also determining the artist selection process. And that just looks like, whether it's a call for art, local artists, or a shortlist artist for particular things. So, we're just navigating that. And as, um, Cara mentioned, we at Land will manage that process, working with the artists, making sure they get under contract, um, ensuring they have the right, um, you know, lifts and things like that, um, so that we're, we're, we have the understanding from our background on how to navigate some of the, um, nitty-gritty of like getting public art into, um, this public space. And then ultimately, the goal is for everything to be installed by the summer of twenty twenty-six. So you will see lots of great art popping up, uh, very soon. So, any, any questions?
Yes.
Please prioritize the garage, home country. It's, it's ugly. Needs work, needs work.
There, we are hoping, um, so, we did these, we did a mini public art plan that's, that's the whole district-wide, uh, for both districts. And then we narrowed in, there was a, a lot of processes of then focusing in on, let's focus on these areas, because we heard from the committee. And then we actually did budgets, and then now it's like, okay, now that we have budgets according to these projects, let's pick, and that's how we came up with these. But we're hoping that, you know, these, these mini public art plans can kind of live on, so that you have, you know, each district kind of has a plan to kind of, when money comes up and everything, that they'll, they'll have a plan to like, it's not random, they have something to go off of. So, definitely as part of the larger plan.
And, and the executive director of the CID, as well as his assistant, and Kathy Blackman are all on the, um, public art project team. So they've been really leading their priorities based on all their conversation with the business owners. What they're hearing is, don't forget us, about us up here at the north end of the district, but also maybe build on some of the stuff that's happening at Coventry Yards. So, you know, they're, they're working with, you know, and again, working forward. They, they really have been engaged with the business owners.
Sure.
We're really trying to figure out, with the money we have, what is going to make the most impact? And then hopefully that will spur other projects down the line, because we will have demonstrated that we can have relate, we have, we have relationships. Um, both CIDS are now included in our, uh, community team, uh, meetings. And, uh, and also, I forgot to mention, part of the money will be going towards rebranding the Cedar Lee District as an arts district. So that's in the works as well, but we had to wait until we got a new CID director and we could, we could work on that.
Max?
I just had a, a, a question, and I know doesn't really concern in terms of ARPA dollars, but I know you guys are definitely the experts to ask. For a community that is interested in doing any type of art installation, is there a, an average cost that they need to look at in terms of investment if they're gonna step into something like this? And I know that's hard, because you're talking about scale and, and the size, but, but I'm just curious, typically, these are conversations I'm always in.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of, uh, for-profit businesses want to invest in this, but they're not quite sure, in, in terms of scale, what that looks like and, and how to lean into a project. And I was just curious if there was a, a range or something typically that you see a community starts with or something, but...
Yeah, I think it, it depends on the medium for sure. Like, murals, we always, that's kind of, um, we, we had so many different ideas going for Cedar Lee, but they landed on murals, because we can do so many with the, the budget. So, I think we're gonna, we're, our goal is to do six murals. Um, and those murals are around like, around twenty thousand dollars, because you gotta, which sounds high, but in terms of like the whole public art world, that, that, you know, that could include the paint, the insurance for the artists, the lift, the fee, you know, all those kinds of things. We, we do try to do like best practice, like of the total budget, usually the artist's fee, we want to save, you know, make sure the artist is getting paid. That's around twenty percent. Sometimes it can be more if they're doing labors, not a less, so that's something to factor in. If you're doing like a sculptural project, one thing, and it, it's actually something that we're working with Coventry, because, you know, they have really big ambitions, but, uh, which is good. Um, but some of the things that are really costly that you can't even see are like electricity, foundation, and engineering. So those sometimes like really up the cost.
Okay.
Um, so we're always looking for like, that engineer that can stamp drawings, but isn't at a big firm, because it's like, it's really costly. So like, sculptures just like really go up, unless you can kind of figure out different ways of installing.
Along with that, it's moving forward, when this happens, is there any, is there any responsibility? Because I would like to know that there, there is something that we should be doing. Is there something that the city should be thinking about in terms of investment or budgeting to help with maintenance going forward? This is something that I know, I wanted to think about as I'm driving through some, some, uh, some of Cleveland, I'm cringing, I'm like, oh my god, why hasn't the city kind of stepped in? And so, i- is there something that we should be looking at in terms of thinking now for a budget going on?
That is such, such a good point. Um, yes, I think so. So, right now, one thing we're figuring out, like, for example, with the business owners, we need to determine with them, what does it mean for them to agree to have a mural, right? So, um, I would say, you know, there's a lot of factors that we could consider, like, you, most often painted murals last longer. Um, because, I mean, there, the, the, the mural on the back of Heights Arts, Heights Arts, that's a building, I mean, that's like over twenty years long, or, um, been up for that long. But, and there's something to weigh, like, sometimes you can do heat applied vinyl murals, which can be great, but they can start peeling, then you have to get it removed. So, um, I think like, you know, how, uh, we've been thinking about this, like, you know, how a lot of cities, I think you guys have like a storefront fund to like storefront renovations, like having something business owners could access to like repaint something, or, you know, paint graffiti or something like that. We are hoping building owners, because they're getting kind of like a mural out of this, that they'll agree to maintain it for, you know, X amount of years, like five years or something. That's usually what we ask for. But after that, sometimes if it does get ruined, it's on the building owner to fix it, because it's their building, and so sometimes they just paint it over, because they don't, they maybe don't have the money to bring back the artist. And so it's definitely something to consider. Like, is there some fund that a building owner who wants a mural, but maybe is worried about affording like ten years down the line to refresh it, that they could access? I think that's such a good idea.
And, and Councilwoman Maddox, I, I would just add to, um, Shaker has been invest, I'm a planner in Shaker, they've been investing in public art. And then about two years ago, we had that same conversation. And so each year, we've been asking council, I think we inch it up a little bit every year, but, um, I think it's, it's under ten thousand dollars a year to, to invest, and, and we're in the process of investing in a, a public art piece that, you know, is, is fifteen years old and needs electricity, things and things like that. So, um, you know, that's something that could be considered as well going forward.
I can't hear myself. In, in terms of what, what Shaker is doing with those art projects, looking at it from a security and a lighting standpoint for some of these, is this something that we need to really start communicating right away with you guys? Because I know as these projects go up, it changes how people interact with them, and sometimes what happens immediately after they're up. And, and so I was thinking as we're going through these districts that we're, we're thinking about security from a pedestrian standpoint and the businesses, but, uh, really looking at it in terms of our cameras and lighting for, for these new pieces, is, is something that I think is important. Is, is, is there someone we should be working with and thinking about in terms of that now? Is that something that happens later on in the, in the process?
Well, I can say that that's why we're talking with planning regularly, because an example would be, one of the options that we were looking at for Coventry was lighting, you know, because it was inexpensive comparatively, just all the way down the district. But Eric pointed out that it might cause a problem with, you know, taller trucks, things like that. So, they've been doing an amazing job helping guide us, which is why we, we have regular communication, so that we're not, we're not gonna get down the road and find out, oh, there's gonna be a problem with, with this, for those kinds of reasons.
And also, given the timeframe of the spend, you know, we don't want to be like, oh, you have to coordinate with CEI, and we're like, oh gosh, that's gonna take six months, right? Like, or more. So, so understanding, you know, with any grant, you, you kind of have to keep an eye on that spend time.
When you're doing, uh, maintenance and budgeting for this, from, from your city, are you working with the, your, your CIDS, your business districts to kind of spend that money on ongoing maintenance or individual properties? What, what is that?
We did a, a sort of catalogued all the public art and prioritized the things that needed art. It's not really, Shaker is as commercially districted as, as Cleveland Heights is. So, I think we just kind of like looked at like, these are the worst ones, and, you know, some of these might just have to go, which one is going, because it's so badly deteriorated, and then invested in the ones based on like, you know, the priority of the conditions.
Can this all be done by next year, right? Sometime next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, we have to close out the grant, I think.
You're welcome. Council, uh, Councilwoman Tetris, uh, you're gonna have to have the last word.
Just wanted to say that all of the nonprofit ARPA recipients are great organizations, but this is something, this is one program I've been really looking forward to. And so I'm really grateful that you happened to be coming and giving us an update. Like Tony said, I, when driving through Cleveland, see all this great art, and I'm excited to see even more in Cleveland Heights, so thank you so much.
We're really excited to be in Cleveland Heights.
Thank you all, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, um, I just wanna, uh, out of respect, uh, for Vice President Russell, uh, before we get into Eric Zamps, Director Zamps', um, presentation on ARPA funds, um, does anybody have anything that they wanted to bring up under other? Yes, please, Councilwoman Larson.
There, there's been a lot of attention lately on the CER, the Kane Park Sled Hill and the ADA project and all that stuff. Have there been any cost overruns on that project? I'm getting questions like that, because the, the change, since that were made, did they cost more money than we allocated through the ARPA funds?
We have a question for Parks and Recreation, who is running that project.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else under other? Okay, and I'm not, I'm not gonna preclude anybody from coming up with another later. It's just that I'm looking at our agenda, and I think we all know, it's, uh, we're gonna probably go into seven thirty, but we'll...
That'll be fast.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to raise, what do we think, ten, fifteen minutes? Okay. Oh, this is perfect. Let the record show, Vice President Russell is here. Hi. Perfect timing.
So, uh, we did this, what, in May, I wanna say. So this is just a follow-up update. The plan continues to do this until the grant period is over. Um, so, the front page rare is a nice shot of Dunsen Park. Uh, this, this is something we've opened our cover, similar to last time, this project, so let's see, six steps. So as a reminder, uh, thirty-eight point eight one seven million dollars was allocated to City Creek Heights. That went through to a variety of, uh, different programs, sewer water, parking garage improvements, public safety, parks and facilities, housing assistance, economic development, and then nonprofits. Um, I want to point out, uh, Cleveland Heights is on track for all funds to be expanded by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, but we should be well ahead of that date. So, uh, one caveat is that these numbers are accurate through July. So, uh, there's a couple things from, from August eighth that I found posted that I include, but, uh, by and large, it's up to June. Uh, seventy-five percent of sewer water partners are, have been expanded from some of our projects. That's a huge chunk of the ARPA, uh, allocation. Here's a picture of Yellowstone with the weed, you know, it's, 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 we've seen.
Mr. President, since he brought, I was waiting, but since it's right there, I just gotta tell you and, and Director, I have never gotten so much feedback about a street as I have about Yellowstone and Monticello. That is just amazing. I've been, I've been holding it in my pockets, waiting on the presentation, but thank you. Uh, residents have just been going crazy, like.
I drive, I drive all the time, I agree. Uh, parking garage refurbishments, though, work at Suri was completed. Uh, Coventry Garage is, is a product, process. I saw last week, elevator's down for some repairs. This is a shot of Suri, I believe. Parks and Rec, a, a large, a portion of these funds went to Parks and Rec. As you see, we've kind of broken down into these big four categories. Uh, Kane Park getting the most, as you can see. This is an aerial shot that Communications just had contracted a couple weeks ago.
Just out of curiosity, if there's a little bit left over from the ice frame, how does that work when, when some project comes in a little under? Does it shift over to something else, or?
I think those, those funds won't be left. I think there's, um, some project management, uh, invoice that we've been waiting on. I'm not sure if it's there, but, uh, those will be paid out. But I'd have to consult with law, uh, for the human rights, because all funds didn't even come for that until last year.
And if something has a cost overrun, where we need to supplement, council would be informed of that, of course?
Especially, I don't think that, uh, it's, uh... So for the Parks and Rec facilities, let's see, Kane Park AV was completed. Um, Kane Park Restrooms, we, uh, are in the design phase. That's expected to be completed this time next year. Kane Park seating replacement, uh, those are seats are being delivered this month, and then shortly after, they'll be restored. Dressroom was, was complete, uh, the roof is completed, as you can see here. There's a roof, it's like in the sun. Um, and the Kane Park Hill seating project, which is, we used to call it the Strang, is, uh, working on. Dennis and Park pickleball courts, uh, of course, we painted this month, and then the fence, uh, fences will be replaced along with the nets being installed, so that'll be done soon, and this is where it gets completed, and then...
President Kuta?
Yes.
Um, the improvements on the AV equipment, did that include in the Alma Theater, the audish, like, the microphones and everything in the Alma Theater, do you know?
The AV equipment, I don't know, I think that was just for, um...
The amphitheater?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I could confirm that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I did see a show this year, and it was spectacular, it was a joke.
It's a, it's a new, it's a new experience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public safety, uh, a lot of these funds have been expanded. The two new ambulances obviously won't pay for those until they're done to be, uh, assembled. Most projects are...
Well, do we know what's holding up the surveillance cameras, Tom?
I don't know the answer to that.
I can provide some info on that. One of the major hurdles in rolling this out and actually implementing it, you know, in the real world, um, has to do with the agreements and the, say, the burdensome, I would say overly burdensome, um, process that the city has to go through with First Energy, who owns the poles, that we are streaming fiber along and attaching the cameras to. Working with First Energy has grown a little bit more convenient, uh, with the addition of an additional, um, consultant that is seeking to help with some of that wiring work. Uh, and I don't have the name off the top of my head, uh, but I believe that, I'm pretty sure we brought that before council. I could be wrong about that, um, we can get you that information later. But, um, yeah, the, the, the largest holdup has been in the, the pole agreements with First Energy. Uh, that's taken much more time than I ever would have anticipated. But we are not First Energy's top priority when it comes to this, but they are a necessary component in the wide distribution of this updated camera system. And, and the, the hardwired nature of the data transmission um, through these, these cameras, the fiber optic cables, requires that we use the infrastructure in order to have a more reliable feed. Uh, the, the major problem that we had with the previous camera system was, uh, in fact, the, the wireless nature of those cameras in part made it very difficult for those things to stay connected and stay usable. So the hardwiring was supposed to be an improvement, but it's, you know, led to immense delays when it comes to actually installing these things. Uh, we can, I suppose, provide more explanation of that. I know that, uh, Director Prosser came before, I don't remember exactly when that was, to discuss some of the... Uh, we can, I suppose, uh, provide more explanation of that. I know that, uh, Director Prosser came before, I don't remember exactly when that was, to discuss some of this. Uh, came before you did the council, a committee of council to discuss this at, at a certain point, maybe earlier this year or late last year.
Phil like was also doing a, like.
It was, it was our last safety committee meeting.
Let me come up with that. Go ahead. Okay. Oh, that's right. That's right.
It's very informative.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
All right, next Housing Assistance. So, uh, we broke it down into three major categories, Led Safe Programming, Down payment assistance, and exterior repair residential. There's been a lot of demand for these programs. In fact, we're standing for an H P O for constantly coming into, um, to apply. So, we have, um, for Led Safe, uh, we have, the next slide will show you the breakdown of all the other sources of ARPA funds we have provided. Um, and these funds are slated to be used to last, particularly because it's debt general fund revenue replacement. Now, how we replace general fund, uh, replacement dollars. So, it frees up the, uh, the incumbents requirement for the end of last year and the spending deadline, twenty twenty-six special, spending deadline should not be an issue, even though it doesn't apply here.
Mr. President, a quick question. So, I'm looking at the ARPA, um, legislation for housing. There was an additional three hundred thousand for the Cleveland Heights Improvement Corporation for startup and operating funds.
I include that for nonprofit category, so.
Are we gonna get to that?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Out of the money that's been spent, do you know how many homes that, uh, down payment assistance have that helped? How many people?
I think they've done, uh, four or five now. Um, they have one that's gonna split contracts, so that hasn't been figured first. But, uh, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it's at least four homes. Yeah. I wanna say.
And what about the exterior repair?
So, these funds are funds that were, um, part of bucket one that we did at the end of last year, that were coming from last year. So, um, that's probably, I think there was like fifteen houses in there.
Okay.
Um, but we have seventy projects just waiting for, um, the okay budget-wise to go ahead.
So, I wanna get my bearings here. I thought the, the down payment assistance program was within the exterior repair program. So, I'm wrong about that, right?
Yeah, it was separate.
It was a separate allocation. All right. I mean, I see it's listed out separately, but, and, um.
And you asked these questions, you said, guess that's thirty-eight million dollars.
I understand. And the exterior repair program, um, that doesn't have a sunset of the end of next year. Is that, or?
Some of the funds do.
Some do.
But those, we played it real safe. So, um, those projects will be done this year.
Got it.
So, the rest of them.
The one that, that's revenue replacement, the part of that that's revenue.
Although, we're not really, other than Led may, we may leave that for last, like we say, leaving it for last. The rest of it, I believe, is all gonna be spent before that next year. That's how much.
Um, one other question on, on the down payment assistance. Can you, you know, you don't need to give it tonight, but can you let council know what the program parameters are?
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's coming up. Okay. I'll keep quiet now.
Second. All your questions are coming up. So, this is our Led Safe Programming, uh, budget. So, we have funds from Led Safe Ohio, uh, which is the Ohio ARPA allocation. Went through the county Department of Development, then went through the county Board of Health. And then landed with us. That's eight hundred thousand dollars. All those funds have been encumbered, run over council, H P O, because that's three times what we know. We're still not done. Uh, the next category is childcare, which is also Led Safe Ohio from the state of Ohio, through the Department of Development, but skips the Board of Health, straight to us. Those funds were exhausting what we're, we're gonna spend on childcare because, um, the vast, in fact, almost all of the commercial daycares, they go through a lead, um, process before they move in. So, um, those are usually taken care of. We found one door, one entryway, one place to sign these kids, uh, that we replaced. There's a couple of at-home daycares that we're going to, um, mediate and the leftovers, we plan on using for regular residential payment. That's where there's a crazy amount of demand, especially with the rental registration. Next one is Led Clearance Programs, the direct allocation to the state of Ohio. Uh, this is to help, uh, landlords comply with that, um, mental registration requirement. Those funds have been going slowly and I'm gonna talk about it a little bit more, but we have a proposal to, to sort of change how we use those funds and use the city's allocation of Led Clearance to, uh, to, to apply those contracts to. That's something from the law to figure out how and if we can do that. Cause we're, we're confident we can get that money. We, we don't wanna do return in the market. Uh, so Led Clearance Program, this is the one we're talking about, possibly moving these contracts over to, um, this is from the city ARPA. And then, uh, this is bucket one, so this still has a twenty twenty-six deadline. And then Healthy Homes and Led Base Paint Mediation, that's basically our own fund that we're using and, we're planning on using in two different ways. One is because some of these Led funds don't necessarily have a healthy homes component to it, which is really just any health, the safety issue that, um, that would need to be fixed or mediated. Um, and then the other thing is, these funds expire at the end of twenty, mostly these funds expire at the end of this year. Um, the Board of Health, which normally we do, uh, Led program with a much smaller subsidy, around ten to fifteen thousand dollars, really fifteen, thirty. Um, they've applied for funds for next year, but we won't have those for the whole year. Maybe, might even show up at award. So, um, the five hundred thousand from City ARPA is meant to bridge that gap, so we don't have to end any programs. And then also, um, uh, to supplement the healthy homes. So, down payment assistance is, as you're asking, it's up to thirty thousand for a single family home or fifty thousand for a two-family. It must be below one twenty. There's different parameters for what's forgiven, um, based on your income and based on what your qualified census track. So, there's a high, so the lower your income, the higher your, or location being in a qualified census track, meaning a higher.
And are there requirements that for these, uh, two-family homes, they must be owner occupied?
Yes.
Right.
And are we gonna be having some mechanism?
Obviously one of the units.
Right. Are we gonna have some mechanism in place that we're, we're checking that? I'm assuming that's covered in the, in the contract terms and the deed restrictions.
Between, right, between home repair.
And is there a period of time that they need to reside in the home?
Yes, for the forgivability.
Okay.
It's fine.
Is it five years?
I'll have to double check then, uh, it's fine.
It's fine.
Okay, so these are the programs being run on a residential exterior repair. There's a one million dollar budget for H R C. They're in the process of spending their first portion, the bucket one portion, and then the rest is revenue replacement. Um, they haven't expanded it all yet. They did, like, a master application period, sort of, some organization do it, and then, um, have to go waiting. So, people applied, uh, they're working through all these projects and then they'll probably come back, will have to come to council for, to go under contract for the next, uh, project. Exterior home repair, uh, is probably, it's a budget. Um, these are, this is part of what I mentioned earlier, about seventy projects waiting for it, for, for us to, to pull the triggers. Those the, on, uh, those contractors getting out, starting to do some work, some of the proceed notices.
And this is all just from putting it out on the e-newsletter and whatever, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Did you do any additional marketing?
You know, we didn't do, uh, any more than we normally do, I don't think. Um.
Announced it a couple of times.
And councils, and, I mean, we've talked about it in meetings quite a bit, and I'm sure you guys are out in public, mentioning this to people. Um, we probably, I don't know if there ever was that change made to the violation notices, but, um, it is on the violation notices that people aren't able to. Like, there's possibly have more resources now. We have Holly, Courts, who's able to help people connect them to resources that they, you know, might supplement the project as well. So, I think there's a lot of, um, attention to houses.
Yeah.
Someone, um, participates in one of the programs. Are they able to participate in another?
Yes, but we have a sort of a, a overall limit, so that all funds are just going to, you know, a few houses, because there are houses like that in their community that, that can suck up a lot of money. There's other ways we could pair existing resources to maybe help them, especially, really only if they're below eighty percent A M I, because we're using hard funds. So, we have the Dangerous Tree Program. These last two are things that we don't normally, aren't able to do with block grant, cause we've had these programs as many as, you know, for a long time, helping people repair their homes. Uh, but it's limited to eighty percent below versus one twenty and below, which is what carpet is. And, uh, the standalone projects, removing trees and doing this to driveways, sidewalks, and detached garages, or, since I'm, see, if you use that. Community Investment Funds, so, the, this is U biz we're calling now, third, third-party business assistance. Uh, the contracts need signed and there'll probably be invoices for the full amount, so they can create the fund this month. Um, Business Assistance Program, this is something that the city administration and city council need to discuss further, cause I know there's some demands on city council from various people in the community about how to use these funds. Um, that are maybe a little bit different than our original intentions, so we just need to figure out what, how people will spend.
So, how and when are we gonna do that? Oh, okay. Just put it on the agenda and we'll.
Yeah, yeah.
We probably need half an hour.
Yeah, to discuss it.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
The Ubiz, are you requiring that they report back on a frequent basis so you know how the allocations are going? Or do we not need to worry about that twenty twenty-six deadline because it's gone out to a third party?
Cause what's bucket one, we'll wanna be paying, cause attention to that.
All right.
Because it's, um, we wanna make sure that everybody is assisted legitimately, cause it's strictly tied to the actual pandemic.
So, you're, you're beginning frequent reports on that, then?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm in planning study. All, all three of them are in process. Uh, Noble and Taylor Road Street, uh, is in the process. Noble World Market Study, Max and Louis Pauls doing it on the Friday or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, Friday, yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, man, they have a justice process. Nonprofit assistance, uh, the big thing to say is seventeen nonprofit, forty-seven percent of their funds have been expended. Here's a little breakdown, percentages, as you can see, some are almost fully done with their funding, like Heights Libraries. Um, Reaching Heights actually is a hundred percent spent, it's just hasn't posted yet. Um, Building Heights as well. So, a lot of people are making a lot of progress here. Um, there's a few, like this one will probably all come in at once, so I wouldn't worry about it. It's zero percent. Uh, C I C, I know there's some things working through.
So, the C I C is still in its, uh, sort of hot wooden phase and they have yet to open up a bank account. That's why it said zero. But, once they open up that bank account, that's, all three hundred K would get.
We, we take the bank.
We take the bank, it just hasn't been set up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the next steps, uh, exterior home repair, that discussion, you know, about clearance funds, if we can, um, so instead of spending a million dollars on clearance, be more like five hundred thousand dollars in clearance. Uh, there's some incompatibility issues with the timing of ARPA program and the law, the registration law. And I think is part of the reason why it's such a slow growth. Um, but we're not abandoning that program. It's just if we use the general fund revenue replacement, actually would also help us, um, have some flexibility to help us spend those funds. Um, the other one is the Business Assistance Fund, that we just mentioned, sort of how those ones are being used. And last thing is, I'm gonna come back in December for another similar type of presentation.
So, again, on the Business Assistance Fund, did the consultant that we hire have recommendations?
I'm not sure.
And I don't, do you?
Yeah, we didn't get really pertinent or relevant, uh, examples or, or feedback, for whatever reason.
No. Okay.
But, you know, going through the notebook, our planning study process, which is wrapping up, I think it's thirteen, um, we know there's some solid representation of that plan. Like, you could apply to a lot of support on those funds.
All right, we have, this has to be really quick now.
Um, nope. So, um, a specific question, it may be the case that you don't know off the top of your hand, which is fine, but, um, the Dangerous Tree Program, has all of that been used or?
No.
Okay.
It's not, has it all?
Okay, so if I could, on the app, and I'll follow up with you later, actually.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Pierre.
Thanks, Ellen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, um, next we're gonna go into executive session, um, Councilman Johnson.
Uh, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the lease or sale of city-owned real property and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or to negotiations with other political subdivisions, respecting requests for economic development assistance as necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment, or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. Before I make that, well, I guess I have made the motion, will we have time to do an executive session to consider the appointment of a public official or?
Is, is that gonna be pretty quick?
Let me include the motion and we'll see where we are on time. Um, for an executive session, let me add to that motion, uh, to include an executive session to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second.
Any discussion? Eddie Colerole?
Cop.
Aye.
Kuda.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Russell. Kosh.
Aye.
Okay, we're back from executive session and now we're gonna go through legislative review. Let's see what I. First, first readings for consideration for adoption, one seventy-one, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor, mayor incident, an application to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and local transportation improvement programs. Question on that one.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to know what the deadline is for the Ohio Public Works Commission application?
September the eleventh.
Thank you.
Uh, one seventy-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Classic Chevy G M C of Madison for the acquisition of a twenty twenty-four Chevy Silverado, uh, sixty-five hundred, crew cab. Director Clinkscale, this is for, uh, Stone.
That, that, uh, truck is for, um, the Brian, Brian equipment and the, uh, hot box. If you recall, we submitted legislation back in late March to, or late spring to, uh, purchase a vehicle and it was sold. So, this is a, an additional piece of equipment that we have located for the same purpose.
Out of two oh one, right? Out of the fund two oh one?
Yes.
And you had a concern about?
Well, I just, I know it's, that, that's what your thought is, but it's the unencumbered portion of two oh one that hasn't been allocated to any specific capital project yet.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this is under the provision of the, uh, Cleveland Heights ordinances that allows a purchase without competitive bids. If the mayor makes the determination that it can be obtained at a price that's lower than under the Ohio Department of Administrative Services or other state program, and that's the case here.
All right, any other? Yeah, go ahead.
If I could, um, Director Clinkscale, so I know that we bought the equipment from Brian Works. Are we buying the solution itself or are we making that ourselves?
We're making the solution.
Okay. And is it just salt and water or is it?
Salt and water.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Right, thank you.
Um, one seventy-three is a resolution recognizing September nineteenth as car free day, or, yeah, and parking day. Every day is park free day. And one seventy-four, which we just received, is an ordinance determining to proceed with the implementation of a public services plan for the Cedar Farm, uh, sit.
Mr. President?
We didn't know about this, yeah.
Do we have any knowledge of what happened at the meeting this afternoon, the assessment, the realization?
There was no objections received.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Which is, it was nice.
And, and keep in mind that this, uh, you know, of course, it has to be adopted by at least five members, by the vote of at least five members of council in order to be effective immediately. But because it's an assessment. But because it's an assessment ordinance, it needs to be approved by three quarters of council. Two thirty-five, three quarters of six.
Um, so now on to, we on to first readings only, yes. Um, one seventy-five is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of forty-six vacant residential lots located within uh, the city of, to future heights. Um, how many, how many vacant lots do we have again? I don't remember that.
Something like three hundred.
It's three hundred something? Five, yeah. And of course, this is something we've talked about before, um.
Perhaps the director can get a little bit more insight.
It's probably closer to, well, you're talking about lots. It's probably closer to one seventy-five. I think there's three hundred-ish parcels total that are open by this.
Oh, I see. Any questions about this legislation? We have future heights here, I think. Oh, there we go. Your son was here. There he is, I'm sorry. Didn't see you.
Are you gonna send this to committee so we can have some time to discuss?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of standard operating procedure. But I just wanted to know if anybody had any questions for chill code or?
Something's going to plan, uh, I can ask my questions there to save time.
And then, um, I mean, same thing, one seventy-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for nineteen vacant residential lots located within the city. So this is to YRM and, you know, these both had attachments with the actual addresses. Absolutely. All right, and then second readings, um. It, uh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Park Landlord LLC. This is the loan, one point two five, two five million for Park Synagogue. And then one six eight, which is the, uh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Friends of Mendelson for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Questions about that, we should have an extensive conversation in executive session.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Is it possible to update that up public in any way or on this at all, do you think, or?
Yeah, I mean, I would just to say that, uh, we have given our legal counsel some direction, uh, to help move this forward and their contact should be made within the next twenty-four hours. Right place. And then, whoa. Yes, this is the last one. Uh, one sixty-nine, an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of Cleveland Heights, a proposed first amended charter of the city of Cleveland Heights. Um. This is years in the making. You know, here we are finally in second reading. Um, I do wanna know, I'm, I'm certainly any discussion, I'm glad to hear it. I do wanna know, uh, just see just my name on here. I mean, if we have co-sponsors, I, I would let Addie know, should we be glad to add you.
Not as a co-sponsor, we're gonna have a discussion.
Yeah, any other co-sponsors?
Our co-sponsors.
Go ahead, Councilman Beck.
I just, I know, I, I, we spoke about this at the hearing, but it's, there, there's no interest at all in pausing this to give the public number one more time, number two, to break this up so they can understand this, this more, or even add any additions. I just, I, I'm, I'm just extremely concerned a- about the current, current condition of this charter. Many of the changes that still need to be made presenting this to the public. Um, it's clear they still do not understand this and the feedback that I've gotten is that we, we, they would prefer that we still break this up and do that engagement. Um, like I said, on, on the Zoom, I, I really think it's important that we get additional feedback from the public. I just don't think we did our due diligence at all with those rushed hearings. And I think making sure that we get feedback from all areas of the city and do it just as robustly as we did with ARPA, I think is critical for this, just based on the fact that these changes are the way they are. But I know this council's gotten some of the same feedback that I've, I've gotten this past week and I, I haven't heard from any resident that's comfortable with moving forward like this. And, and so that's why I'm just at this table again asking if there's any way that we can pull back on this to get number one, more community engagement on this. And number two, at, at least consider breaking this down into these sections so that it's easier for them to understand and vote it on in sections versus an all or nothing thing. I think you'll, you'll find more buy-in from, from the public and they'll get a better understanding of what's actually in it. But I, I think combining this all at once is still problematic for, for, for them and I, I haven't gotten any feedback uh, from anyone in the public that really truly understands all these changes and the impact. Um, everyone's continued to ask questions, so that, that's what I'm just asking tonight. Is there's any way we can just pause that to get that feedback? I, I think it's just important. I think this is even more important than ARPA. And I, I don't think we rushed ARPA and I just don't think we should be rushing the, the, and community engagement portion of this. Um, I know that a lot of work is gone and investment and conversations, but that, that doesn't take away from the fact that the public is still seeing it. So anything that we can do to do a more robust community engagement process, I think is important. Um, to build the trust, the public's trust, number one, and to aid in our understanding about what it is that we're, we're asking them to take a look at. Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Um, I mean, from my point of view, um, there's been a lot of due diligence and, uh, over a period of years. And second of all, um, breaking this up into smaller pieces doesn't, it doesn't make it any less, it's still the same amount of changes. And then you have the problem of, you know, the fact that this is a very interactive document and you're leaving it to chance and to, um, uh, uh, possibly some peril of having, um, those documents that doesn't work together.
I, I would understand that if it wasn't for the fact that we separated out rank choice voting from the rest of that. I think if we were gonna take that view, it should have at least been added to this.
And I would say this, and I, and I did consider that, um, at least in, in my personal opinion. Um, rank choice voting, wards, um, anything that would be, um, not just controversial, but, you know, differently impacting, you know, the way we vote and that kind of thing. I, I, I would, I would definitely have wanted to separate that out, but I didn't, I don't find anything. Everything in this charter, in this amended charter, is tested in many, many, many other charters. It's been discussed and re-discussed, discussed thoroughly by the Charter Review Commission and re-discussed by council. Um, I think last week we did a really good job of separating out and, and eliminating, I think, what could have been the more controversial parts, so I'm, I'm, I'm personally satisfied. You had your hand up next.
I did.
Oh, you, you did, okay, all right, you did.
I know that we discussed it at this table with the Law Department, um, but so that, uh, the public could hear it, um, could I ask the Law Director to explain, um, why, um, why we are recommending a single issue on the ballot rather than breaking it up into multiple buckets?
I think I would respond by saying what he said. Um, you, at this point in time, it would be very difficult to isolate those uh, provisions that council would want to, uh, put into buckets and to, uh, ensure that you don't by adopting any one bucket create inconsistencies with another bucket that might or might not be adopted and try to overlay all of those potential changes against the current charter and against potential future other changes. Um, it's just a very complex process.
Councilman Posh?
Um, I, I don't feel like this is rushed. I mean, we spent two and a half years on it, we've had lots of meetings, we've had Saturday meetings, you know, people have talked to us, we, we've gotten their feedback. We've had Charter Review Commission, a bunch of really good people represented by the mayor's people as well as the council's people. Um, we, this, this decision we're, we're making tonight is not changing anything in our charter. It is putting something on the ballot to let our voters decide that. And we have two months worth of time in order to make sure that they're educated. Um, I'm, I'm very happy to proceed with this as it is.
And, and I'm committed to, okay, so there's the illegal women voters are doing a forum on the charter, but I'm committed to doing as much education as, Councilman, you, go ahead, you, you were next.
So, uh, uh, let me just make this, this clear for the, the public and everyone at this table. I, I don't agree with this. I, I think if we did this with the Noble project, people would have lost their doggone minds. I think we cannot pick and choose the level of engagement that we give the community in terms of feedback. Regardless of how much time we have spent building this, the amount of conversations that we've had, the people who have been interested in this have been researching this, that's great. But the public has seen a finished product, but even last week when we were doing hearings, we were still making adjustments in front of their face. This is extremely irresponsible to do. I can tell you it was unprofessional to watch, it was painful to watch last week. And to have residents come to me and say, how can I trust the process when I'm watching you change it in front of my face? I don't even know what's go, what it's gonna look like by the time it, it, it hits the, the ballot, I think is a problem. We spent this entire time that I've been here talking about strengthening our community engagement, making sure that we're giving them more information to be able to make educated decisions. What we did just last week was performative and it was because they just got the documentation. And regardless of the fact that they've spent two years watching us build it, that was the first time they had it in their hand. We're talking about over forty-something pages that again, we were still editing when I did, right before I was headed to my reunion on Friday night. And, and so to, to vote on this on Tuesday, I think is absolutely irresponsible. Then to tell the voters, well, there's plenty of time for you to understand it before you vote. We have not done this with any economic development project or any other change that we've tried to make. Push this through and give them one week, one week is all they've had to see what we're actually about to vote on tonight and that changed on Friday. And so again, I, 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 I know this is gonna go through, it's clear, but I wanna make it very clear that this is wrong, the way we're approaching this. And we cannot go back and change this for any other further community engagement when we're, we're upset that the, the city administration or our planning and development department comes in and they do something similar to this, we're feeling like, and then we wanna put our foot down. It's this council deciding that no further community engagement is, is, is necessary. It's this council deciding. It is absolutely, this council can say, we can pause this to do feedback across the communities like we did before, we spent thirty-something million dollars of ARPA funds. But we're saying you got a week to review forty-something changes, even though we changed it Friday and this is it. And I think if we're gonna put this to voters, we should have cleaned this up, we should have gotten more feedback prior. Because what's gonna happen now is if I get community engagement, we're screwed. What if members of this public are seeing this and we have whole groups of people who are saying this portion of this is problematic? We can't change it, we can't adjust it, we're already telling them it's on the ballot this way. And so I, I don't think we should be approaching any change from this point of view. And again, we redid an entire project on Noble Road just based on the fact that we felt like we needed more feedback and community engagement. Now we're saying we're okay with less and giving the public less time. It's just not right to do. And so again, if we're going to do this, I expect us, and we should have some type of dates and times right now. If we're gonna tell the public, you've got two months, why aren't we discussing with that timeline for community engagement? No, I'm not done yet. You guys are gonna push this through, so I'm gonna get this all out of this table because it's clear, no one cares anyway. But I'm gonna say it while the public is watching. If we're gonna do this, I, I, I expect that we have dates and times that we are going to invest across this city and making sure that they get the, that we get their actual feedback, not performative, not that it's going on the ballot tonight, but that we're actually hearing this feedback. And I want this councils to, to be very committed that there are major changes need to be made, that we speak up loudly and say that we've made a mistake here. Because we're, we're not getting the feedback that we need from thousands of residents. We got the same handful of people who've come in here last week and given us the same feedback and not one person that I heard didn't say, don't make any adjustments to this, maybe outside of the folks on the commission. And that's all I'm saying, we're moving with, with, with zero feedback from the public, we really are. Zero feedback in those hearings. We saw what, five, ten, twenty people at most and many of them were on the commission building these policies. And they're coming in even questioning why certain things weren't added. So imagine someone as a resident who has never heard it before at all, trying to put pieces together. I'm just simply saying, this level of community engagement for me is extremely unacceptable. With these changes, they're gonna have a lasting effect in the city.
So, you compared this to Noble. Noble had, this, this process had about a, by a factor of like one thousand more airing of public time than the Noble project, so there's no comparison there. I can't even believe you brought that up.
Disagree.
Secondly, yeah, well, I disagree with everything you said.
It's clear, that's why we're passing this tonight. We're not gonna insult my view.
No, I'm not. There's no insulting here, I disagree with you. That's not an insult.
And pass it tonight.
Okay, and, and, uh, as far as what happened last week, that's the legislative process.
No, it was.
Ninety-eight percent in my view, okay, and I didn't interrupt you, I would like you to not interrupt me. Ninety-eight percent of this was done before last week. We talked about just a few tweaks last week and that's exactly what we did. It was a few tweaks out of dozens and dozens and dozens of, of changes, many of them small, some of them a little bit bigger. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry you're not satisfied, but.
Mr. President, that Noble plan was finalized when that went to the public and then they gave us feedback. They had months, no, not nonetheless, because you just used it and dismissed it and that's my neighborhood, so we'll be clear. So let's be clear, what they saw was a final project and gave feedback. You gave this public a week, that is not the same, so don't dismiss that.
What I'm saying.
Not only did they have that, that longer amount of time for Nobles, they also were able to go back and make those changes and adjustments. And then we did additional hearings.
I'm saying something different.
So do not minimize that, that is not the same. You gave the public Tuesday. Tuesday, it's forty documents and now we're voting on it today, so do not dismiss it, that is what happened.
I'm saying something different.
Okay, Mr. President, when is the final document that we're voting for on today? When was that completed? Were changes made on Friday before we went to the holiday?
Yes.
So you, you're, you're telling me that the public shouldn't be okay with that, vote, us, us voting on this today, even though we were still making those changes in their face? Do not dismiss what I'm saying about the lack of community engagement, because you're playing in their face. You played in their face last week, it was performative, which is why no one showed up. And how is this performative? I'm the only one literally at this table that cares about the feedback outside of the people at this table and on that commission.
Talking about the way we're doing, okay.
Good God!
Councilman Larson, go ahead.
There's a difference between nobility, nobility court, the developments that we've authorized and discussed in here. Yes, because the voters can vote it down. Councilor Maddox, they can vote it down. We will provide, we'll have information sessions, we worked to get to this point so that we have a charter that aligns with the mayor form of government. That's where.
Done prior to this, not after. It should have been done prior to this.
My reasoning to you as to why I think that we're gonna vote, need to vote on it.
It's wrong.
You can call it irresponsible, but it is my choice to vote the way we should tonight.
Yeah, Councilman, uh, Petrus, then we have to get out, it's, it's a little after seven thirty.
We, as I said before, we've had many hours of meetings amongst ourselves talking through these. We reached a general consensus, I think that it was in April, about where we wanted to go with the document with the general goal of placing it on the November ballot. We were aware of the September fourth deadline. Of course, if we got it sooner, then we could have had more opportunities for public feedback. I think that it's always good for us to get as much feedback as possible, but this is the situation that we're in. Anyone could have suggested that we take a different approach. Anyone could have suggested that we start having public sessions in June or July, but that's, that's not what happened. We just got this from the Law Department, we have this deadline of the fourth. Yes, I think that we should have additional public sessions on this to help educate people. If I could ask a question of the Law Director, is there anything that would prevent us from having public sessions to educate the public?
Why wouldn't it? That's a ridiculous question to ask.
Okay, so, so we're able to, after voting on this, to have additional conversations with the public.
What, what kind of question is that?
So, um, at, at this point, it's, uh, seven thirty-four. So, uh, this meeting is adjourned, we're gonna go head over to the.